We're gonna make a beginning. Let's start with a prayer followed by the question.
Glad we looked to you this morning and were thankful for your blessings you've showered upon us and were mindful of the issues of the county before, so we pray for wisdom that we would make decisions right near sight. We pray for those that wear a badge and a uniform and keep us safe, watch over them and direct them. Just go with this prayer. I pray in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, I turned it on.
Testing, okay.
Thank you.
Minutes, they were sent via email and corrections if not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
So move, second.
On paper?
Aye.
Payroll, number 21 for calendar year 2016 totals $208,329.8. We have a total of 215 claims totaling $592,975.87.
Motion to approve payroll and claims.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Three, zero. Monty.
Yeah, the sheriff's in court this morning. And I will tell you, I believe there's 92 inmates, approximately.
Southerners DOC and 19 F6.
There you go.
Thank you, Monty.
Thanks, Chris.
We will turn it over to Ed. You are next. Thank you, sir. It was sunny south. Four miles.
Probably one for him or not?
Probably not.
Most of my stuff is just sort of updates and stuff like that. Did talk to the centerline people. They did get 22 and a half more mile done. They actually did that on Saturday. So they're trying to get stuff worked in, stuff like that. So right now, we have about 39 and a half miles done. They still have another 58 miles to go. He's supposed to get back with me today and let me know when they're gonna try to get the rest of that and stuff done. So on Saturday, they basically worked in the north end of the county. They did like the Norwalk Road. They did 450 East. They did 600 East. They did 900 North. I think they did 300 North from State Road 1 to 116. So that's where they worked. At least, that's where I saw it looked like they worked. They were made some other roads they got. But did get the fence installed up on 950 North, so that's done. Roadside mowing, we're basically down to our last three and a half townships. Like I said, when we do Jackson, we do half Chester, so that's coming along pretty good. I don't see Lisa Harris here, but she's gonna make a presentation to you guys about BioSeal. It's a product that she's promoting that we can spray on hot mix and stuff like that. So when she comes, I'll maybe do it at the end of your meeting or something like that. So that's all I have.
All right, very good. Thank you. Nate.
I think I would have to show this time.
The reputation.
Well, we'll start with just an update on the right-of-way dedications. Bridge 79, which is the bridge project that Primo has a little bit on. Just update there. Carl, well, it's Doug Hoffman. He's declined to sign the right-of-way document on that project. I have two of the three, but he'd be the northwest corner. In light of that, I'm gonna try to work with Primo, see if there's any issues with them in the installation without his additional right-of-way. On Bridge 2 and 203, I think we had one right-of-way on each of them submitted. Jared gave me some information on the Bridge 203. He's had some calls about that. I'm gonna look into those and see if I can get you some more information on that. The county road projects, 500 South, 500 West, no new documents since the last meeting. And then on the Chester 1564, I've met with one property owner, contacted a trustee on another. I'm expecting two of the three. And I should be getting some information on the farm manager that manages one of the other properties. So those just went out just two weeks ago, so.
The 500 West, are we having any issues with the state?
Roy's been working directly with them on that, so it sounded like they were gonna be able to sign off on that. I just haven't been part of that discussion.
No problem.
Just a quick note on that. Something I'm gonna try to work out is how we try to reach out to the public on this, because I think there's some confusion with what our needs are for the right-of-way. Why are we asking for the right-of-way? Because there's been a mixed response from some of the property owners. The right-of-way needs are for the county to take care of the drainage for the roads. It's not just the road width itself, it's the drainage needs and the side ditch to try to make sure that the pavement system stays in place, good working order, to remove obstructions for the traveling public. If someone gets off the road in an accident, there's nothing for them to hit. Proper drainage keeps the water off the road, so there's less risk of hydroplaning for drivers. So for us to do that adequately, we need that space. And that 60-foot number, though it may seem arbitrary to those that are getting these notices, it's important for us to have that space to make our roadway safe. So we're gonna try to continue to put that message out there for the public so that there's not confusion in it, but certainly, we're gonna try to get that message out. On the second item, this Chester 1564, we're moving forward with the aluminum box. That'll actually become a bridge when this is done, so it'll now be Bridge 400. So in the future, I'll start talking about Bridge 400 instead of this covert number. Waiting on the right-of-way documents and contractor quotes. So as soon as I have both of those in hand, I'll try to present some items for signature. I don't wanna buy the box until I have the right-of-way. So we're gonna hold off on taking any other action there. I do have, going on to item three, I kinda knew this was coming up. With the award of community crossings grant money, I need to supplement, submit supplements to the design contracts on Bridge 2 and 203. This is the multiple copies of this. It's a supplemental agreement for permit services by USI. That would involve the DNR permit and modeling as well as an FAA permit, because we're in a flight path to Fort Wayne International on Bridge 2. So putting a crane up in that area apparently requires them to approve a permit. So is this your signature, Blake?
All three signatures. Motion to agree to supplement number one.
So move.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
And I also have here Primo's contract for Bridge 79. That includes both their contract and the payment and performance bond. That there's a total on the payment and performance bond. I was gonna point out that their contract just references their bid. They didn't fill that total out, but we can add that in before you sign that. But the payment and performance bond does include that total. Two copies of the payment and performance bond and the copies of the agreement, one original and two copies.
Signature by all.
I think only, you don't need to sign the performance bond. It would be just the signature and a test. So I mean, single signature on that.
Single signature.
Signature for me.
Okay, motion for the president to sign agreement between owner and contractor for construction contract.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
And moving on with new bridge projects for 2017. We had initially approved, moving forward with design services for Bridge 6 and Bridge 18. I have contracts from ANZ Engineering for Bridge number 6. I don't have the contract yet from Butler Fairman for Bridge 18. If you'd like to go ahead and sign that contract, it's for $28,800 for.
Has Roy seen that?
He has actually. He modified the Title VI language on this, so. Appendix 4. He has, and he changed the language. There we go. Yeah.
Does that require all three or just?
It's just the one signature on this one. Two copies, so one's a double, so it's just a single signature by the president. He had this modified specifically.
To approve for the president's signature short form of agreement between owner and engineer for professional services.
That's with A to Z.
ANZ.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
It's popping up and down, but it's all right. Now, the last meeting, I mentioned two utility permit applications. I've since talked to NIPSCO, and that's just a service drop, so that wouldn't require commissioner approval. I do have the revised fiber permit application for AT&amp;T, part of that same fiber line that Jared mentioned during the trans-boarding meeting. And this would require all three signatures and a test, and then we do notarize that and have that recorded.
Motion for approval of the fiber installation for AT&amp;T.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the last thing.
This is the essentially part of the close-out documents for Bridge 193. Essentially, our document to the state saying that the project is complete, asking to close the job out. I think it just needs two applications, or two signatures on that.
It's got three lines.
It's got three lines.
Two and a test?
Not really.
Okay, so I guess we just have all three signed. Most of them have only asked for two, so.
Motion to approve the Indiana Department of Transportation report of contract final inspection and recommendation for acceptance.
Second.
Bridge 193. On paper?
Aye.
Trying to keep it quick, sorry. Item eight here on my notes. Our bridge inspection reports for 2017 through 2020 is part of our federally assisted inspection program. The list has been posted on Endot for that contract, so you may have, may or may not have heard from different consulting engineers interested in doing that work. They've been contacting my office. Their letters of interest or intent are due October 27th, so that'll be before your next meeting. Once I receive those, I'll go ahead and assemble that along with scoring sheets and then submit them each to you individually, so you have an opportunity to score those. And then once you've had a chance to score those, just return them back to me and then I'll coordinate getting those back to Endot, so they can finalize that. So I'll be looking at 2017 contracts, so it's essentially getting your selection in place for that, so.
Okay.
And the last item I have on here is that I will be, I'm planning on attending the New Bridge Conference this Wednesday, this week, so I will be out at that. Hard this week, so.
All right.
Other than that.
Thanks, Nate.
Lot of paperwork, lot of things going on, so thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for me?
Appreciate it.
Not right now.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Tim and I are here this morning to get approval for the bonus program for 2017 plan year.
Identical to last year, changes?
It's the same as last year. Here's the signatures. Roy has looked at those and approved.
Roy has, okay.
That's our plan design, we call it charges. Yeah, everything's the same as last year.
In this room again, just like we did it last year?
I thought this was part of deciding how much we paid for insurance, but we haven't selected our insurance carriers.
No, this is separate.
Yeah, strictly. Everybody fits, so. This is ANZ. BMI, blood pressure, cholesterol. I'm gonna start working on my BMI again.
We have, we have the dates tentatively scheduled for November 2nd and 15th.
Those are what day of the week?
15th, November 2nd and 15th.
Wednesday and Tuesday.
Just need a motion to accept these.
Is the 2940 the same as last year or is it slightly higher?
It's even.
Worked last year, I think it's fine.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Motion and second, all paper?
Aye.
We need three signatures.
And allow signatures for the agreement. It'll be part of the motion, so. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Flexible spending.
Flexible spending. Also flexible spending. Everything stays the same. It's $250 annually for the service and then $4.50 per participant every month. And I think last year, we had $50,000 in contributions into the flexible spending plus dependent care, another $3,000. So they use it. They use it.
Is this the same price and everything as last year? Motion to approve.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you.
No signature required. Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Do you wanna move that insurance proposals to the end or? Submitted more than one? I'm gonna leave these to the end, okay? Because this will be part of our executive session. Mike Key, you're next.
Good morning.
Morning.
Sir, I'm here on behalf of the Plan Commission Board, as far as to give you their recommendation for a set of ordinance amendments that we've been working on, as well as to give an update based on the city of Bluffton's decision that they made this last week. So everybody got a chance to look at the amendments. I'm gonna go through them kinda quickly, and then if you have any questions about any of them, stop me and we can go back through.
My first question will be, do they have to be passed in unison with every ordinance as-is, or can we drop one or two out of it?
So the recommendation, two of the recommendations are to do not pass, so we'll go through those two amendments separately. But yes, you can have, the county and the city or one of the towns could have a different ordinance than everybody, but we do like to have everybody having the same language across the board. But it's not required.
I guess my question has been brought up with regards to the campground.
Yes.
And the subdivision that's nearby.
Yep.
Can you tell me which was there first?
Well, the subdivision was plotted before the campground was developed.
Okay.
And then the houses and the PMRVs were done about the same time. There was a couple of houses that were done ahead of time. Some of the houses were built about the same time as the PMRVs.
I guess where I'm alluding to is that was the campground ever designed to be an RV park instead of a campground, or was it always supposed to be a campground?
It was meant for RV stay as it was designed with water, sewer, and electric cookup for RVs pull-through sites.
But at the time, was there specific instructions in the ordinances that allowed them to be there on a temporary basis, semi-temporary or permanent basis at that time?
At the time, there was a vague sentence in the zoning ordinance that stated that a recreational vehicle that's used for residential purpose is considered a type 3 manufactured home. And there was always question on exactly what it meant for residential purpose. So the BZA defined that as a period of time not exceeding six months in a calendar year. The ordinance draft that you're having in front of you now increases that number to eight months inside a RV park.
From date to date?
From, in a calendar, eight months in a calendar year.
Or is that like made in November, you know, is it a set time?
No, just any eight, just any eight months in a calendar year that they can be there. And then there's a special exception process for extended, longer stays.
That is, the description we're talking about, I don't wanna prove that today unless Roy's here. So let's, let's.
The campground thing.
Let's drop that out of what we're discussing today.
Okay.
So going forward, your other amendments, briefly go through that.
Sure, okay. So amendment number one, in regards to, is adding and adjusting some of the land use table section in the zoning ordinance. So it is adding that cemeteries are permitted use in the C1 Conservation District, and then adding new death, or new land uses for farmers market, temporary farmers market, retail food production and processing, wholesale food production and processing, and large and small slaughterhouses.
Was the slaughterhouses confined with a special exception with the permit?
They were, there are two, how we handle them is there were two different categories. So small slaughterhouses were looked at as being under a certain threshold.
2,000.
Yeah, basically animals a year that under, if they're under that threshold.
And they're in certain zoning.
Yes, and A1, I1, and I2.
They'll have to have a special exception.
Yes, let me decide that those within the A1 areas would be.
We talked about that, but that would've been, thus be what you would decide at this meeting if you wanted to change that.
We, we want that.
Okay.
For in the A1 zoning district.
They would be fine in industrial or wherever else they were permitted.
Yeah, the industrial and industrial too.
The A1 would need a special exception.
Okay. Amendment number two, adding language and the special exception section of the ordinance to allow, we have a caveat for special health and family needs where you can have a second temporary residence on the property. This would allow people not to have to use a manufactured home for that second residence, but be able to remodel or redo a detached accessory building or garage to rehab it into that facility for people that don't want.
What timeframe is that, is tied to?
The timeframe is based on, on what the special health or family need that's brought to the board's attention, so.
It's a case-by-case basis.
It's a case-by-case basis, yeah. And then part of the language is once that special health or family need stops or it moves on or whatever, then there's six months to take out the temporary.
Right, so they notify you that, and then.
Yeah.
Is there any check-in process to follow up on that, so that we don't do it and they never tell us, and six years later, they're still there?
Yeah, we just kinda keep track of where things are if we see stuff or have reasonably that something has changed.
Right, we wanna stay on top of that.
We usually write a letter or whatever, but they, they usually ended up with a written commitment or something that explains how the process is supposed to work for them. So that's what that's about. Amendment number three, as regards to multiple dwelling units, and this is putting in that six-month removal timeline for people that do the manufactured home route as well. So we wanted the same language for the rehabbing a detached building or doing the manufactured home route. We've been using that in those commitments, we just wanted to be part of the ordinance from here on. Amendment number four regarding signs, there was a key Supreme Court dealing, Reed versus the town of Gilbert, where basically the Supreme Court said that you can't have a sign ordinance that has anything to do with the language on the sign. So you can't say, have certain restrictions on a political sign or on a. have certain restrictions on a political sign or on a, if it has anything to do with the sign says and how it's regulated, that's not legal anymore. So, what we did is, there was, we had the historic monument designation, we changed that, and traffic control signs, we adjusted that, so now from here on, we don't have any regulations that are based off of the topic that the sign says, but based off of the sign where, when, and how the sign is posted. Amendment number five in regards to type three manufactured homes, if you're going to wait to hear the RV section, I would ask you to wait to vote on this because they're tied to each other.
Okay.
We'll wait.
We will.
Okay. Then amendment number six has to do with the expiration timeline for development plan petition, so they would have, once the development plan is approved, they would have two years to start the project and then 10 years to finish it before they'd have to file a new development plan. And that would allow people to do a phased-in development where they might build part of the structure and then five years from now they might build another part, but as long as they start it within that two-year period.
And what does start really mean, I mean like dig a hole and put something in?
Sure, we, the, the starting, I'm talking about that site work has been started, so the site's been staked, earthwork has commenced or applicable improvement location permit has been issued.
So, they have to do is try to stake in the ground and that's started.
Yeah. It's, there's, Indiana Code has this designation for 10 years to protect people from basically getting retried under new rules, so say you don't get something started right away and you want to change the rules on them or something, there's protections granted to these people, so we wanted to make starting a simple thing, but to make sure that they're actually doing something to verify. And then the 10 years is to help the people that are doing phased-in projects. Most, it really has never really became an issue because most of all the plans that we get are either fall off the screen right away that, you know, we're not really going to do that, or they're, you know, breaking ground the next day after we issue the permit. So, usually it doesn't become an issue. Amendment number seven has to do with adding the definitions for the land use types that we discussed in the first part, so, as well as adding aquaculture into the definition of agriculture. So, there talks about the slaughterhouses and all that stuff, what their definitions are. Amendment eight will bypass the RV regulations, just to verify with that that the City of Bluffton did make two adjustments to the language.
I would like to hear those.
Yes. So, the adjustments were to the special exception that would allow for the initial time period for a permanent stay or extended stay site in a recreational vehicle park. The language that went through the plan commission's process was initial three-year period. The city said that would be a one-year period with a one-year re-up, so every year then we come back and redesignate those sites to verify what the board is owning appeals.
One question I have with this, can they pick and choose the sites as what you described?
They would make an application.
Or can you?
They would make an application to, they would make an application to the board and the board would have to decide whether those were good sites. Basically, it would be how it would work. So, we're not going to say that these are the only sites you can apply for, you can apply for anything, then we're going to look to see how that works. And the one caveat on that is that they would have to meet the 300-foot buffer from any non, non-working uses, so if the, say, the property is zone A1 and allows for recreational vehicle park, but the neighboring property is zone R2 and doesn't allow for that same use, then they would have to be 300 feet from that zoning district. So, that is one of the caveats, so in some ways it is picking the sites, but not always. They can pick any site that complies with that dimension.
And what was their logic behind having to review it every year? If it meets the qualifications of being 300 feet, why do they have to review it every year?
The discussion in regards to that was just to make sure that the decision was in a good standing year after year. There were concerns that maybe the, the sites may become dilapidated or something negative could come out of it. The, the process that was, that it's mirroring is the process for tax abatements, where you get your initial tax abatement approval and then every year you come back in and ask, and say, we have done these things, will you let us have the next year's tax abatement? So, this would be the similar process through the special exception process that's saying, we asked for this and then we'll continue on. And then would allow them to expand or contract the amount of sites on an annual basis too if needed.
One other question, I'm just thinking out loud, the buildings that they're thinking about permanently putting on, on a basis, are they subject to tax abatements?
I, they're, would be personal property, so I, that would be up to them to.
Okay. I don't know if they're qualified or not, so.
Yeah, I don't know. So, Les, if you have any other questions for that, we'll come back.
Not right now.
Next time.
Thank you.
Five and eight right now, we're holding out some.
Yes. And then the last thing that the board gave a do-pass recommendation to was the initial placement of language for heavy haul routes in the ordinance where that any development plan will have, provide a written highway or street department-approved heavy haul route for construction traffic during the process. And that would be for any development plan, whether it's a residential, general development plan, or cell tower, or whatever the project would be. CFO, all the above. And then the board gave two do-not-pass recommendations, one for the placement of a road usage agreement into the ordinance, and another one for requiring the item permit prior to applying for CFO development plan approval.
In regards to the heavy haul route.
Yes.
You said something about residential, so if somebody's building a house.
No, for residential development plans, so it'd be like for the construct, construction of, be like multiple duplexes or.
I just want to make sure it's not including a single-family dwelling.
No.
Gotcha.
It would not.
Very good. So, do we want to make a recommendation to approve everything presented with the exception of number five and eight? Or do you have any other?
And then, for the.
Or do you have something?
Well, the two things that were given do-not-pass recommendations, we would ask you to do nothing and just allow them to go away in 90 days.
Okay.
So, that would be our recommendation, just to, you've heard it, and if you agree with that, just to let it go. For the other ones, other than five and eight, which will come back when Roy's available, maybe on the next meeting, then we can do that at that time, but other ones, they gave a do-pass recommendation, if you're okay with it, you can go ahead and.
So, what happens now, I'm back to the one about the starting in two years and having 10 years to build.
Yes.
If somebody doesn't start within two years, does it, it's just protecting them as far as falling under the same ordinance, but they've already got the application, and how is that different than now?
The, the process, what's different when, if you receive a development plan approval, we, we adjusted the language a couple of years back to make it so they only had two years, that they had to get everything done. We realized that there needed to be a time period after starting that people could finish up, because the plan commission really does like to see a full project brought in front of us instead of piecemeal plans, so one of the best examples is the self-storage facilities, where we will see the whole plan for eight to 10 buildings, and then every year they'll build one more building. But we get to see the whole drainage plan, all the utilities, everything upfront, knowing that that'll work. And then we don't have to worry about, well, what happens when we get to the last one, because we've solved the grand plan to it. So, this would allow them a 10-year period as long as they start it, not a two-year period.
But it doesn't exclude them from five years from now coming back and saying, we want to add another, or if they do.
No, yeah, if they did, yeah, if they did eight and they want to add a ninth, they would still have to come back to it.
What if the ordinance changed between the eighth and the ninth, are they grandfathered in, or are they, is that?
They could build anything on the approved development plan. If they wanted to change that, then they would have to get adjustments to that plan.
Currently?
Yes, yep. So, whatever was on the plan, as long as they build it just as they were approved, then it was all okay. If it would be that no, or don't move this last one to a different location, or the size is changing, then they would have to go through a new process to get it.
That's not that much different.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do you entertain a motion?
I will.
I'd make a motion that we accept the area plan's recommendations of do-pass on all items with the exception of number five and number eight, and those would have no action taken on them at this time.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then what I'll do is I'll wait to do signatures until we finish up the last part, and Beth, I don't know what you want to do with ordinance numbers.
Do you just need one ordinance number for all the changes, or ordinance numbers for?
If you want to designate one today and then have them adjust it at the next meeting, would that work? Because they'll vote again on it.
Right.
You just want to.
So, it'd be a new ordinance on the next, next one, but you can put all the changes right now in one, or did you need six different ordinance numbers?
No, just, we can just do it under one, I just wanted, so that next time we didn't have to create another ordinance number if that's.
Okay, so this one would be ordinance 2016-07.
Okay, okay, all right, and then we'll do signatures at the next one as long as Roy's available for that, so.
Thanks, Monica.
Any other questions for me at this time?
Well, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Did a good job.
Thanks.
Okay, let's go through the monthly reports.
Hang on.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you need these two? That must be, I kept one. Oh, okay, then we'll get one, do you need this one? Okay, Matt, we're leaving. Okay, what I had on the other business is, did you want to discuss anything on the county farm updates?
All I understand is that we have two people that are going to give us an appraisal, but I have not seen them that I'm aware of, so.
Okay, I haven't seen them, so that's the last action, is that Roy was to contact me about getting the appraisal done.
So, we're going to have to continue that for a while until then the meeting, and hopefully at that time we can take action.
Okay, and respect building, I dropped that off. Want to pass that down?
That's what we agreed to and.
This is the new contract, right?
Right.
Yeah.
That's Rob's signature on it.
Yes, it does.
We'd already approved that, right?
We've already approved it, we just need to sign it.
And the last thing I had is, and Roy, I surprisingly got that out right away. I didn't think that he was going to have that done right away, but Nate has expressed an interest in having a credit card for traveling that he needs to do and just, you know, things that come up that, you know, he needs instant credit on, so Roy did draft a resolution. I do have the application process that has to be filled out, and we also have to include the minutes from the meeting and the, or the ordinance, so I do have that, so if you guys want to act on that today.
To approve of that.
Yes. I do have the resolution, so.
Sound motion?
And I think I have your resolution number.
Yeah, since I have a number.
It is 2016-03.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero.
That is all I have. Oh, no, I don't, yes, that is, I'm sorry, that is all I have, I'm sorry. Want to have me for the next meeting?
All right, before we start that, Lisa here, is here.
Oh, for the.
Yeah.
Ceiling project?
Morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
Information for you. Okay, so, the way I understand it is that you recently paved three and a half miles, and so what we, what I want to present to you is our product to use as a sealant for that three and a half miles that you paved. And I know that it is kind of a question mark in most people's heads, why would you seal a brand-new pavement? But in the pavement preservation realm of things, sealing or putting something on top of the new pavement is being recommended, okay? The reason for that, your liquid asphalts that go into your pavement mix are not as good as they once were, I'm sure we're all noticing that the pavements are not holding up the way that they used to. They're actually failing in a very short period of time. The liquid asphalts are going to other industries, the better liquid asphalt, or, I'm sorry, liquid petroliates are going to other industries, so the liquids are less, are less quality. Then you're adding rap, you're adding, which is recycled asphalt pavement, and you're adding raps, which is recycled asphalt shingles. Both of those are a sustainable resource of asphalt, but they're not always a good resource of asphalt, because some of those, first of all, the asphalt has already been used, it's already oxidized, and then some of them are on the second and third generation of being used, you know, depending on where you get your millings from. So, what that ends up being is much stiffer mixes. We're seeing ravelling, cracking in record time. And what this product is, Biore Restore, it is a green product, it's primarily made up of soybean oil and then other agricultural oils. It's an after-product, it's sprayed on, it penetrates the top one quarter to one-half inch of the pavement, it actually softens that asphalt matrix, it helps it to adhere to the stone that's in there so that the stones don't pop out, you don't have that ravelling, it closes up the pores, it's polymer-modified, which gives it an additional, closing up the pores helps for water permeation, but the polymer modification gives it additional water permeation protection, it basically like Saran wraps the road.
But it doesn't make it slick.
It does not make it slick. We are, we have some of the best skid numbers in the business. When the process is going on, obviously, until it cures, it will be slightly slick. We will close one road, one lane of the road, we divert traffic to the other lane. With, it cures very quickly, within, usually within a half an hour. Now, in lower temperatures, we can have up to about 45 minutes, but when it is cured, your skid test numbers, which the skid test numbers are on Biore Restore's website, they are normal. And so, there's, there's not residual slickness to this product, because it actually penetrates and it goes down in. It is also a product that, it's clear. It is also a product that, it's clear it can be used over your striping. You probably don't have this issue, but in cities and towns, they have curbing, they have architectural features to their pavement sometimes, and it can go on over all of those as well. It doesn't mar those, it's not collapsed. Okay, so, but it also typically, a lot of your black products have some carcinogenic component to them, this does not have any. What other questions can I ask for you? I was just trying to present to you in a really brief way because I know you have a lot of things on your agenda.
I guess my only question is, what's the closest location, you know, county or municipality that's used it, Two Wells County or what?
Two Wells County.
Adams County is known.
Adams County has used it, yes, and that's right at Bear Croods.
I was going to say, give us, just give us something that we can drive over, take a look at.
Adams County did it on three hair and south.
Right.
Just east of Bear Croods. Their hot-mix project actually was two miles between five and seven west, but they sprayed this on between six and seven west. So that would be your comparison of them, two miles.
How does this probably differ from RejuvTech?
I don't know. They just said something about, and I said, "Well, you need to talk to the commissioner."
I can answer that question.
And I was going to have her give me an estimate of what the cost to do-
Yeah, now originally you might ask questions, yeah.
Okay, how it's different from RejuvTech is that our product is not an emulsion, theirs is an emulsion, ours is pure product, and it penetrates immediately in emulsion. It, by nature of any type of emulsion, is that there is water, the water has to evaporate, that makes it a lot more slick. They do have, so they do have slickness. And they have to sand. No sanding is ever allowed with this product. It's not necessary and it's not allowed, we don't use it. So there is no sanding. I think other than that, you know, I'm not going to say anything bad about RejuvTech or about Reclamite. Been around for a long time, they have proven results. We also have proven results. Though, you know, it is, it is proven that by using your rejuvenator and reusing it and using it consistently with your PESA ratings, your 10 PESA rating is excellent, your eight to, eight to nine PESA rating is a really good road, and you can keep your PESA ratings by using it consistently. After 12 years, you can still have PESA ratings of eight to eight and a half.
How often, do you have to apply it, just the one time, or is it a recurring application?
To keep that kind of a result, it would be recurring, and the recurring would be every probably four to five years typically. So, but it is a lot less, it saves you a lot of money in the, in the meantime, you know, it'll, it'll save you probably, you know, a dollar versus $6. You know, a dollar every time you apply it versus $6 to come back in and chip and seal. Now, I may be high on the chip and seal because that's not, am I high?
Ben.
Am I high on chip and seal cost?
Are you what?
I, I said chip and seal would be maybe at $6, is that high?
That's high.
That's high, okay, I'm high.
What would you say it is?
This year, to do a regular cylinder, is about $8,000 a mile.
Yeah, okay, so.
Eighty-five thousand.
Now, on this, this three and a half miles, what we were looking at as far as cost, if you're, if you just want to do a test and you want to do approximately a mile, we're looking at a dollar ten a square yard. That's with the brooming, that's with us coming in, bringing a broom in and sweeping. Typically, we ask the municipality to sweep because of just the mobilization cost of bringing the broom. And if the, the entire three and a half miles, we would look at about 99 cents a square And my recommendation, regardless of what you do with this particular piece of road, would be that you either treat it now or you treat it first thing in the spring.
What's the coolest temperature by which you can apply it?
Typically, 45 to 50 degrees, 50 degrees being a, or more optimum temperature.
Or higher.
Yes, or higher. Yes, definitely. But, you know, I would treat this road, like I said, sooner than later, just because of the oxidation factor.
Once it's already treated, you can salt it, you can sand it, you can do what you need to maintain the road.
Yes, definitely. Yep, no problem on that.
Well, I'm sure we'll go look at Adams County, what they've got.
Okay.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we just want to take those under advisement, just to name their names?
I was just going to name.
That's what I did.
Name, open up, name names and that's it?
Yeah, we're just going to accept them and take them under advisement, anyway. These are the proposals we received for the health insurance, so. Oh, that's just yours, okay. So that's on the 20th, all those guys are coming in. You want to sit up here with us and tell us what's going on? Apex, that's Apex.
We don't need to open them.
I just, Mike, mine are on the outside.
That's an absenteeism. So these are, what's the term you want to use, proposals or?
That's from Tim, Tim Stefan. The blue, the red are from Tim Stefan, and he has three different proposals.
Provider, proposal.
There are quotes of proposals, or is it a fancy term?
We just have a proposal from IHC.
Okay.
We have a proposal from Star Insurance.
Okay.
This is from, I've got two names on it, Abbott.
Abbott?
It's on the card.
Secure Benefit Solutions.
Yep, Secure Benefit Solutions.
Apex Benefits.
Apex Benefits.
Oh, sorry. And Platinum Benefit Consulting Group.
Okay.
I think so. Do you mind, Lisa?
That's great.
Okay.
Perfect.
Those are, we will take those under advisement in our executive session. That's with the Apex where that is.
Do we have any other thing to come before? Nothing? Beth, anything else?
Most necessary.
If there's a good audience first.
Audience, open for comments, suggestions. Yes?
We've come because we're interested in the county making an ordinance, I think you talked about it a little bit, about abandoned houses in the unincorporated areas. We're from Keystone area, and there's a significant problem in that area with houses that have just been left for 10-plus years, some of them, and it's continuing to grow. There's been dead animals in them, carcasses, we've got neighbors that are worried about rats and rodents coming across the road under their property. We know from Orkin Men that years ago, there was a significant problem underneath some of those houses. So we don't know what can be done. We're not asking that we, you know, have a comprehensive thing necessarily, but I don't know what can be done to protect the other homeowners in the area.
For the record, I know who you are, Rhonda, but if you would state your name and address, they're going to want to get that for the record.
I'm Rhonda McFerrin, and this is Gary McFerrin, and our address is 1920 West, simply south in Keystone, Indiana. So we're just outside the edges of that community. But it's been an ongoing problem. Several years back, actually, we had a house that the people had left, had abandoned for whatever reasons and for some time. We had a heavy, they had been remodeling, and we had a heavy snow that winter, and that house fell in half and lay that way for several years until eventually it was downgraded and somebody bought it at a tax sale and it was made into a shed or something, and now that property's different. But, but we have numerous examples of problems just right in the area that are disconcerting and people not knowing really what to do about it particularly. We have a lot of families without much means, and they still enjoy their, their life there in the country, in the rural area, and appreciates the benefits of living in a rural area, but, but it is a problem. Actually, in one spot this summer, I think the weeds are probably five feet tall, six feet tall, and the property looks much better having the weeds there than what we had before. So it isn't just a mowing situation that we're looking at, it's actually getting some of these. I suspect one of them nearby probably has trees growing through the inside of the house because on the outside, there's definitely, there has been for years, different plants growing through the siding and now-
So these are completely abandoned properties?
They've been abandoned.
There's no one residing inside?
In fact, when we first started inquiring about this years ago, they couldn't even find who the owners were because they had been assigned to a mortgage company, then they had been bought by somebody in California, and nobody would take credit for this property, you know, that property in particular. But that property, we finally, that one's been demolished. That one, we thought, you know, had a small little basement area in it, and it just really had health hazards, and eventually, I think, the firemen burned that one down, which would be awesome thing if that could be done, so.
Because the big problem that we have, living in a totally unincorporated area, property values go down because of these properties, and a lot of the people don't have the means to help take care of things. How are we ever going to make the area better if we can't get rid of stuff that's just left by, and nobody cares about it at all? And it really affects, you know, we've got a lot of people, I can speak for Keystone, a lot of people in Keystone area trying to make it look better, but with all the, with the abandoned buildings there, there's nothing that we can do. Our property values go down because of that. Down property values affects your tax base, so. And, and we've got about, we didn't know this, we've got, we've got quite a few Keystone people here, not, not on purpose, I didn't know that, but we're not moving, you know, we want, we want the area to be improved and there's nothing we can do about it, we don't, didn't know. But I've talked with Kami, and I've talked to Mike Lotzenheiser.
Have you consulted the health department?
We did, on the previous property, like 12 years ago, we went through the health department to try to get and declare a public nuisance. And the thing that has to happen with that, what I was told was, somebody has to go on, like a child would get lost in there and get hurt, there has to be some kind of an incident that would happen for them to step in and say, "Yes, it is a health hazard." Problem that's happening in Keystone is, we've all gotten older, we have a lot less kids in Keystone now. Now, some of the properties have resold, and we now have more kids in Keystone now than we did 10 years ago, but the process-
I think we need to bring it back to the health board and have them do some inspections.
That's what I would say.
And then we can start at least at that juncture.
Okay.
And then we can come to common ground and see if they're, the county actually should impose an ordinance. I, I don't want to go there without Roy being present, but let's, let's start with the health board and the health department and see what happens.
One of the houses I mentioned that has the weeds so high, I think it showed, the owner shows, we know who the owner is. I think the county could find somebody responsible for that, and that helps a lot, I think. I don't know for each one of them if they could find the owner or not, but.
Great, well, we'll start there and, you know, stay in touch. We'll try to have some answers here over the winter, so.
Great.
We appreciate your concern.
Thank you for bringing up your attention. Any other comments from the audience? If Matt kept, we'll take your motion.
Second.
We are finished. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.